Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the officer. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact the staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council Meeting stream live on Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order for July 10th. Go ahead and mark yourself present. Clerk, let us know who is present for the record.
Let the record reflect that all members are present except for Councilmember Stip.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Stip? We do have the motion, and we do have the second. Can I get a vote? Pass is six zero. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and invoke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Almighty Father, please provide guidance to members here on the dais as we get to do the business for the city, hopefully make us wise decisions. Also, please, if you can, provide some calming over this great nation. Unfortunately, it seems that those art of communication between members of differing views doesn't seem to kind of work like it used to. Also, please protect our first responders as they serve us either here and abroad to make sure they get home safely to their loved ones. With that, in your name, amen. See, we have one communication item tonight. We'll hear about the image this place, public art unveiling. Who's going to speak on that one? Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Lane Ruiz, and I'm the Arts and Culture Coordinator here with the City of I'm so thrilled to be unveiling our newest public art project, Imagine This Place. Artist Mary Lucking has done a tremendous job envisioning a project that is both visually stimulating as well as thought-provoking and interactive. The five sculptures are accompanied by podcast-style interviews that feature narrations of how various people imagined Bullard Wash as it may have been in the past and how it might be in the future. I will now show a short video where you will hear from our wonderful creative team.
My name's Mary Lucking, and I was the artist for this project, which meant that I was asked to do something that would encourage people to walk on the path and kind of ask about the history of the park. So I was brought on by the Arts Committee here, Guyline and Lane, and I worked with two fabricators in the valley, E Squared in Phoenix, and they fabricated the stainless steel parts and Meltdown Glass, which is located in Tempe, which made the glass pieces.
You know, before we cut the first piece of glass, before E Squared started the metalwork, I mean, there was this whole vision, you know, that she came up with. And when we saw the drawings, I mean, we could not wait to work on this project just because the design was so innovative and so forward-thinking.
The idea behind the project was to help people look at the park and imagine what it might have looked like in the past and the future. There are five sculptures along the way, and they're supposed to work as a cohesive whole, but each one has something a little bit special and different.
We took about eight weeks to do the glass. It was difficult, yeah. I mean, when you make cool stuff, it shouldn't ever really be easy, right? This was something that's never been done before. We've never manufactured anything like this before, nor others. And so, we did feel like working with Mary, you know, we produced something that was really innovative.
So the main structure is stainless steel, and then the glass is sandwiched, and it's glass and bits of mirror that are cut and bits of dichroic interlayer, which change color depending on how the sun hits it and how you look at it.
Mary and the city working together, they really utilized our art in a great way in there. And that that's for the public. There's something that they can visually see, but it's also something that they can learn about that area.
And on the sign, which is located kind of in front of the library, there's a QR code and a URL to a place where you can get onto your phone and listen to other people imagining what this park might have looked like in the past and the future. I interviewed a whole bunch of people who are kind of experts in different aspects of this place, so people who work in the park, historians, geologists, people who've lived in the town for a long time. I've gotten all these insights into the history of Goodyear and gotten to meet all these kids who were growing up here, and it's just been a delight.
It feels amazing to be trusted, to be selected, to do work of this magnitude, of this complexity.
I hope that it makes the park a little bit more interesting and delightful for people. It was really fun to see the way that the glass worked in ways that I didn't even know. So it's fun to put things out in the real world.
It's very humbling, and we just have a tremendous amount of gratitude that we were able to be a part of this.
We are so excited to have such an amazing work of art in Goodyear, and we cannot wait to see our community be able to enjoy it. Although this is a unique way to unveil the art, as unfortunately, the weather's a little hot here and we can't do our outside ceremony that we would typically do, I would like to encourage everyone here to visit the artwork in person to truly experience all that it has to offer. At this time, I would like to give thanks to a lot of people in this room here. Would like to recognize those that were involved in this project and making it come to life. When I call your name, please stand and remain standing, and we'll do a big round of applause for everyone at the end. Can we have artist Mary Lucking stand up? Eric Bolsey from E2 Innovations. Representative from Meltdown Glass. Project Manager David Jocind. Park Superintendent Jeremy Figueroa. Art Administrator Guyline Oslansky. And this project would not be complete with all of the interviewees that were involved. Can I have Judy Cook from the Litchfield Park Historical Society and all of the families that you brought today that were involved in the historical interviews, please stand up? Charlotte Larson. Dan Childers. Emmeline Wu. Eric Arns. Felisa Dazstur. Gloria Cuadrez. Isaac Caruso. Jack Benavida. Jeremy Figueroa. Julie Stromberg. Leo Clasto. Nathan Torres. Nolan Randall. Parker Benavidi. Sally Kiko. And Stephen Stemkin. Can we give them a round of applause? Lastly, we wanted to make sure everyone could take home a little piece of Imagine This Place with them. So everyone should have a sticker sheet. Mayor and Council, you guys should have a sticker sheet as well. There is designs of Mary's glasswork, so those represent the five spheres that are along the pathway. And then there is a QR code that directs you to our website where you'll hear the audio interviews of the people that stood with us today. That concludes my presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any... Go ahead, Councilmember Gillis.
Mary, fantastic work. I'm one of the people that's an entertainer up here, so anything that has to do with the arts, I don't care, singer, acting, the artistry, whatever you're doing, I think it's beautiful. The... Guyline, where are you? Back there. Everything that you've been a part of doing in this city has been awesome. I've loved it since I first got on here. I just think it's awesome. Every electronic panel, every heart, every everything, I think it just makes our city special. And I know you guys have put a lot of work into this. And Mary, this is something that's really different. I love it, and I just want to say thank you for taking such an interest in this city. And all of you, all of you that were a part of it, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I wanted to thank the Arts and Culture Commission for continuing to be innovative and bringing... I love when you take history and you bring it into the present and even the future and mix it with art. I am so thankful for the collaboration with the Litchfield Park Historical Society. I think capturing our history and getting those oral interviews are so critical. Mary, I know you've been a part of our local scene for a long time. I loved hearing on the video how this was new and innovative and a challenge, and that's the kind of art we really want to see here that is breaking new ground. So thank you so much, all of you, staff, volunteers, and certainly all the community members who were involved.
Councilmember Loretta.
I'm going to echo that. Thank you, Mary, that this is just awesome, because this is something I've never seen anywhere like this. I love the interactive aspect of it. I love the fact that you could do it in the morning and then later at nighttime or in the evening at different times of the year. It's going to be different art every time you go by. So I just downloaded the QR code, so I'm not going to listen to it now, but it's just wonderful. I want to thank everyone that was involved for the interviews, from the glass company, from Litchfield Park. Thank you so much. This is a very special project, and I am very excited. And thank you, Guyline. Like I always say, arts and culture and parks are my favorite departments, so.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, once again, say a thank you as well to everybody. I really appreciated the community involvement, including our residents in their city as well, so thank you for that. I was excited to see all the different unique and creativity that our art and culture department brings to the City of Goodyear. It just adds a lot of culture to the City of Goodyear, which really creates a sense of place. So I appreciate that and looking forward to explore and see more art that comes from your department. So thank you.
You know, there's not a whole lot more to add, except to say, being a numbers guy, you know, financier, I'm just amazed at what people can do with their hands and with a brush. And, you know, especially me personally, I love the raps that we have throughout the city with our artists, and we use local artists for all of this. You know, I can't do it. That's why I'm so amazed at some of the artwork that you all produce. And I also appreciate everybody stepping up, the community involvement, and giving you input on that, and just keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it. All right, with that, the city clerk... Let's see, do we have any... Let's see, time for citizens who would like to address the city on any non-agenda items?
Yes, Mayor. Lois Dean Walker.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, and we can respond to criticism, request staff to investigate, and request the matter to be scheduled later on, so just to give you a heads up on it.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lois Dean Walker, and I'm a resident of Estrella Mountains Lucero area, and I'm a former resident of Chicago, Illinois, and I just want to say that this is amazing. I've been in many city council meetings, but this is just beautiful, amazing. I've been here three years, and I'm proud to be a Goodyear resident. So my concern today is, we've heard a lot of talk about the traffic lights on Estrella Parkway, and so that's why I'm here. I just want to get the real know what's going to happen. The flow on Estrella going north and south is just horrendous. We see now, we've had, we think, monitoring going on on Hillside, and we're also concerned about the traffic, the speeding on Hillside, on the streets that flow onto the Hillside area, especially where the new Lederol Park is. So we're just wondering, one, are there going to be traffic stop signs on Estrella? And will there be anything on Hillside? And can there be speed bumps placed on Hillside?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to... Do we have somebody here to talk to?
Steve. Mr. Cento.
He'll talk to you in the back, back there, to get some information from you. And thank you for bringing it to attention. Any others?
Yes, Mayor. Christina Jungay?
I know most of you, and I'm not sure whether you're going to be very happy when I finish what I have to say today. I moved here 10 years ago. It was open spaces, we had farms, we had animals, we had... It was so beautiful. Now, we don't have any of that. We sold out to all of those big companies, so they would bring us a lot of money, money that we put into a building that is worth for a king. This is a building that a king could live in without any need. We built a parking lot that nobody needs. Why? That money could have gone to the vets, to the homeless, could go to so many other people, and we're ending up... We don't have any more farmers. You know what is happening now in our world? There's no... It's very difficult to get any eggs, anything that we used to get just by going, you know, next door, a couple of miles away here. We're building lots and lots of these tiny houses. What is the reasoning? I don't know. All of those buildings of tiny apartments, more and more and more, in a place we are living in a desert. Where are we going to get all the water from? I really would like... I once asked Joe, our major, he said that we're only using 46%. But what about right now? What are the plans from now on? How many more buildings? How many more of those things? Do you want us all to get out of here and just leave it for those tiny buildings? Is that what the idea is? I belong to a 55-plus community, and we came here to spend the rest of our, you know, the last years of our life. Well, right now, it is so difficult. You go out, and the traffic is awful. You don't have a place where you can go and be happy, because it is difficult to see all of these houses, all of these apartments, building, building, building. It's a completely different world. And I would like to know why all of this money was invested in this building, in that parking lot, and how much was invested in the veterans and the people that have worked, you know, very hard for all of us. Let me see if I have anything else. Of course, Amazon must have given you a lot of money, and all of those other big companies. I mean, it's fantastic, you know? Let's get all the money. It doesn't matter whether our community is completely down the hill. It's not worth it anymore. It's very sad. And I would like to hear a couple of answers. Where is the money? How much do we spend here? How much in a parking lot that nobody uses? I don't think that anybody here has put their cars in that parking lot. So why are we doing all of this? What about the water? In the moment when there is no more water, what are we going to do? I mean, we are not promised that we're going to have water for all of these people, all of these buildings, for five, 10 years. We don't. Maybe today. But what about in two or three years? We will all of us have to leave our houses and just leave everything behind? Just because some people gave us a lot of money? Is that what our county, is that what our city stands for?
Running out of time.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anybody want to... Manager?
Can she give her name and group and her address, please?
Christina Young. My address in there. I live in the same place as you live, Wally, as you very well know.
I'm just doing it for the public, so they know who you are.
Okay. For everybody, if anybody has any questions, I will be here. Thank you very much.
Somebody don't know if we're released on the water and what property rights are and that type of stuff, so she can kind of understand how it actually works?
Yes, Mayor.
Please have somebody talk to her.
Justin will meet her outside.
Justin will meet her out? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, but I just have to get it out of my system.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Any others?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items two through eight by title only?
Number two, approval of amendments. Number three, adopt resolution number 2023-2328 authorizing the submission of an application for energy efficiency and conservation block grant funds to the Federal Department of Energy, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents relating to said applications and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement if grant funds are awarded and authorizing the city manager to approve the required budget amendment if grant funds are awarded. Number four, adopt resolution number 2023-2327 authorizing the submission of an application for fiscal year 2023-2024 Water Conservation Grant Fund, WCGF, to Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, WIFA, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents relating to said applications and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement if grant funds are awarded and authorizing required budget transfer if grant funds are awarded. Number five, approve a 90-day extension of the approval of the final plat for La Privada Parcels III and VII Phase I, subject to stipulations. Number six, authorize the acceptance and execution of a special warranty deed from Estrella North LLC conveying right-of-way at the intersection of Hillside Drive and Estrella Parkway. Number seven, approve and execute the underground drainage easement for flood control purposes. Number eight, authorize the mayor or designate to enter into an IGA with Maricopa County and approve required budget amendments to share the cost of a workforce development coordinator, WDC, to be located in Goodyear.
Does anybody on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Okay, hold on.
I have a question.
Do you just have a question? Okay.
I just wanted to highlight, I think it's Louise. I think she might already left. Lois? But yeah, I think it looks like number six is part of that traffic signal for Hillside Drive. So I just wanted to highlight that to her, that that's on here as well. I'm just going to the full... Just highlight that. I don't have anything else.
That's it? Go ahead.
I just wanted to be sure that staff told her we were going to take... That this was on tonight's agenda. She probably didn't realize that.
Right, we can make sure.
Make sure she knows that. Okay, thank you both. Okay, with that, can I get a motion and a second? I have. Seeing the motion, second, go ahead and open the voting. Pass is six zero. Thank you. There are six public hearings on the agenda tonight. First public hearing item to consider is a use permit for mini storage at Willis Road and Mountain View Drive and Rainbow Valley Road. As a reminder, the public hearing for this item was open on June 26th, so we're still kind of going through that. So go ahead and introduce yourself to the public, please. Open it? Nope?
It was already open.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Wadalu Portis Cortez, planner. The request before you is for a use permit for a mini storage facility. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Willis Road and West Mountain Vista Drive in Estrella. The property is shown on the screen by the orange outline. The property is owned PAD, Planned Area Development. The PAD is known as Montecito PAD. The PAD zoning for the property was approved in 2008. The property falls under the Business Park and Business Park One zones within the PAD. The PAD was amended in 2022. However, the amendment only modified residential zoning designations. The PAD amendment did not make any changes to the Business Park zones or any other non-residential zones. The photo on the screen shows a sign located in the Business Park zones of the PAD, the subject property, indicating the property is zoned for future Business Park uses. The 2025 general plan designates the property with a neighborhood's land use designation. The neighborhood's land use designation allows for a wide range of densities and housing products, as well as commercial uses at appropriate intensities and locations. The site is approximately 9.12 acres in size. The size... Excuse me. The site is approximately 700 feet from the fire station, number 186. And the Rainbow Valley Water Reclamation Facility and an APS substation are also within the vicinity of the subject property. The site is approximately 370 feet to the nearest residential property line to the northwest of the Segovia community, and approximately 200 feet to the nearest future residential property line to the southeast in the Cantamia community. As mentioned previously, the property has a Business Park and Business Park One zoning under the PAD. This slide shows the zoning map included in the PAD. The orange outline shows the subject property within the Business Park and Business Park One PAD zones. The PAD calls out the permitted uses for these zones, which are limited by noise and odor easement areas from the city's Rainbow Valley Water Reclamation Facility. The uses permitted for the Business Park and Business Park One are included on this slide. These uses include warehousing, manufacturing, equipment rental, plant nurseries, and parking lots, among other uses. Parks, offices, retail, and similar uses are not permitted within the Business Park zone because the zone is within 350 feet of the noise and odor easement of the Water Reclamation Facility. Retail uses in the Business Park One zone are limited to uses complementary to the Business Park and light industrial uses. Mini storage facilities are permitted in both zones with the use permit approval. The following slide shows the development standards established in the PAD for the Business Park and Business Park One zones, which include setback and height maxims. These zones have a maximum height of 40 feet or three stories. The mini storage facility meets these development standards. The applicant proposes a 98,800 square foot main storage building and two smaller buildings totaling 36,400 square foot, shown along the perimeter of the property. The proposed project includes 925 total units, 731 climate-controlled units, and 194 non-climate-controlled units. Unit sizes are proposed to vary in size from five feet by five feet up to 10 feet by 25 feet. The larger building on site has a height of 12 feet to the roof line, 17 feet to the top of the parapet, and 26 feet at the highest point of a pitched roof. The two storage buildings along the perimeter, shown here, have a total height of 12 feet to the parapet. As previously mentioned, the development standards permit a height up to 40 feet or three stories. The proposed heights are 20 feet lower than permitted. The applicant is providing the required vehicle parking spaces and landscaping, which include landscaping along Willis Road frontage, along the perimeter of the buildings, and on the rear of the property where the retention basin is proposed. The site plan also shows the location of the 300 feet and the 1,000 feet noise and odor easement setback lines from the Water Reclamation Facility. Access to the site will be provided from Willis Road. The eastern driveway is proposed to be a full-access drive, and the western driveway will provide right-in, right-out access only. As mentioned previously, the property is located approximately 370 feet from the nearest residential home to the northwest in the Segovia community and 200 feet from the Cantamia future lots. The applicant provided this area overlay of the site plan showing at various locations the distances from the Segovia community to the proposed site's property line and from the Segovia community to the nearest storage building. For instance, at this location, these distances, this house is located approximately 393 feet to the property line of the site and 389 feet from the property line of the home to the building on site. Excuse me, to the proposed building on site. The proposed building elevations incorporate a variety of materials, including stone, stucco, CMU, and metal as an accent. The elevations also include a desert palette. The elevations also include a desert palette, and angle roofs to blend in with the residential neighborhood in the area. This east elevation face, faces the Willis Road and the Cantamia community. This west elevation faces the inside of the site. As previously mentioned, the main building on site is proposed to have a height of 12 feet to the roof line, 17 feet to the top of the parapet, and 26 feet to the highest point of the pitch roof. This is the pitch roof shown on the screen. This is the only point where the height of the building is 26 feet. This elevation faces north of the site. This elevation faces the interior of the site towards another building. Trying to go to the next slide here. Okay. This elevations, this up, elevation faces the west towards the Segovia community, and this elevation faces the south towards the fire station. Both of these buildings are a maximum or a total height of 12 feet to the parapet. These are ventrines of the main storage building on site. The application meets the use permit evaluation criteria established in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes the mini storage facility is compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area, considering the permitted uses in the PAD Business Park zones, and the limitations of the property based on the proximity to the water reclamation facility. Storage facilities are typically less intensive, low-impact uses compared to other uses permitted on the property, such as warehousing, manufacturing, and equipment rental, among others. The nearest residential home to the northwest is approximately 370 feet from the subject property. This distance includes an open space tract included in the Segovia final plat and the Montecito PAD. There is also an additional separation between the proposed storage buildings within the subject property, the undeveloped portion of the property towards the rear of the property. The applicant does not propose uses for the rear of the property, and it is, and the applicant is required to fully landscape any retention basins proposed in the rear. The nearest residential property to the southeast is approximately 200 feet from the subject property. Within these 200 feet is Willis Road, a modified scenic arterial that at full buildout, if needed, will include three lanes of travel and a bicycle lane on each direction. The applicant proposes the hours of operation for the business to be open seven days a week with proposed hours of operation for their office from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and facility hours of operation from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Staff does not propose limitations to the hours of operation due to the allocation being within the Business Park zones of the PAD, and the open space and road separations between the property and residential neighborhoods. The property is within lighting zone two. Thus, the project is required to provide full color, full cut-off lighting designed to not spill over residential parcels, and in order to mitigate lighting concerns, staff is recommending a stipulation that requires lighting to be dimmed to 50% between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. A traffic study was reviewed and approved with the use permit application. The traffic study found that the expected traffic from the proposed development of the mini storage is less than the initially anticipated for Business Park uses in the The citizen review and public hearing processes were followed. Notices were mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. A sign was posted on the property. An illegal advertisement was published in the newspaper. A neighborhood meeting was held on May 17th. Approximately 31 residents attended the meeting. Residents expressed concerns with the design and height of the building, noise, lighting from the building in signage. Residents also expressed concerns that businesses could be run out of the units, and that hazardous materials could be stored on site, causing potential fires. In order to address resident concerns, staff is recommending stipulations that include prohibiting hazardous materials from being stored on the property, a stipulation that prohibits businesses from being run out of the units, a stipulation that requires the dimming of lighting to 50% from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., a stipulation prohibiting RV storage and other outdoor storage on the property, among other stipulations. In addition, based on feedback received during the neighborhood meeting, the applicant completed a noise study for the proposed mini storage facility. The noise study concluded that the noise level at the nearest residential property to the southeast would be approximately 44 decibels or less, and approximately 41 decibels or less for the nearest residential property in the northwest. The 41 to 44, excuse me, the 41 to 44 decibel noise range level is the noise of an average room or the noise from a moderate rainfall. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their regular meeting on June 14th. At the hearing, seven residents spoke in opposition of the project, and two residents expressed support for the project. The residents in opposition of the project voiced concerns with hazardous and flammable materials possibly being stored in the facility, potential crime and security issues, and transparency of the use permit process. Residents were also concerned with noise and light pollution, building height, traffic, and the use of, use of the mountains. The residents expressed they want retail and restaurants in the area instead. One of the residents in support of the project expressed that the traffic and noise impact would be minimal, and that the building design looked good, and that the use of a storage facility is the best use of the property, and that there is a need for storage in the area. A second resident submitted a speaker card in support of the project. In total, staff has received nine emails in opposition of the project and two emails in support of the project. This total includes a couple of emails staff received after, after the finalization of the staff report. Residents that emailed staff in opposition of the project expressed that they believe this property to be zoned for commen, for a commercial district. Residents expressed with concerns with the potential noise and light pollution, crime, and decreased property values. Residents that emailed staff in support of the project indicated that there is a need for a mini storage facility in Estrella. The use permit request meets the city requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the use permit, subject to the stipulations found in the staff report. Mayor, council member, this concludes my presentation. The applicant is in attendance tonight.
Is the applicant wish to say anything at this point?
Shalbach with EAPC Architects, 901 East Madison Street. Most of my presentation was already covered by Guadalupe, but I'm happy to answer any extra questions in regards to the noise study or any prohibited uses. Those are probably the only extra information in our presentation.
Okay, why don't we wait till we hear from, from the public on that?
Okay.
And then I'm sure you'll be back up, okay?
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see, any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
You saw the spiel before there, Steve. Just give your name, address, and you got three minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Steve Johnston. My wife and I are property owners immediately adjacent to the proposed development. And this evening, I'm speaking in opposition to the proposal, specifically to the noise assessment study completed by the applicant's engineer. It may interest you to know that this particular assessment is anecdotal in nature because the engineer used all their data from other storage facility models and facilities that are elsewhere in Phoenix, or in other towns. They did not do site-specific performance calculations and attenuation modeling to determine what the actual projected noise level ought to be at the residential communities. And without these actual calculations and models, there's no way any engineer can accurately predict what those noise levels ought to, are going to be. They can guess at it, but it's not going to be necessarily accurate. And so in this particular case, the applicant is falling very short of the standard protocol for assessing potential noise attenuation. And in fact, the, there's no way that they can project whether or not the noise level at any given areas, north or south, is going to be anomalous or, or excessive. So from that capacity, and in that sense, I think it's incumbent upon the applicant to readdress that aspect of their noise assessment. And before any use permit would be issued, I would request that the council, and out of fairness to the residents in the, in the area, ask that the applicant do the right kind of performance modeling and noise attenuation modeling in order to come up with the right, the right kind of data.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor.
Good evening. I'm Mike Durda. I stand in favor of the project. I'm a Cantamia resident right across the way. I think the Architectural Committee has come up with a wonderful plan. It looks good. It fits in with the neighborhood on both sides. The height is half of anything that would be there in its place. Could be as high as the Harkins Theater behind us, and those of us that live in Cantamia probably wouldn't want to look at that. So I think the, I think the job's been done well. If it's 45 decibels, which is what it says on the site, the air conditioners that go in at Cantamia are 72. They're right outside your bedroom window. And there are probably more than 27 of them within the same space from everyone's home. So I think the mitigation of sound is really not what we think. I think it's fine. I think the traffic is the most important part for me. A study was done at the University of Kansas three years ago on storage facilities because they're becoming one of the big hot items to invest in. Less than half of the people that rent a storage facility visit it once a month, and they go on Sunday mornings. So it doesn't affect the traffic in Estrella, and certainly a facility like this doesn't affect the water use. So it looks good. It doesn't obstruct our sound. It's better than a chemical plant. It's better than anything else that could be chosen, like something that would, you know, like we just saw about the landscaping and some of the other commercial developments. So it's just a big, nice-looking building that very few people are going to be annoyed by, I think. At the planning meeting, people talked about chemicals and whatnot, and, you know, maybe they'll get snuck in. Well, there are ATVs all over Cantamia with gas tanks in the garage. There are snowbirds with full tanks of gas in 110-degree garages that are there six months at a time, and none of them are blown up. So I think what's blown up is the vision that everyone pictures, unending orange garages across the street from them that make a lot of noise. And that's not what we see. That's not what we have, and I think it looks great. So I urge you to vote for this and get something that looks like this and functions like this for all of us who need it as well in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Mayor. Jeff Redman.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Appreciate your time tonight, and I do appreciate your ongoing service. My name is Jeff Redman. I live in Australia Mountain. I live in the Segovia development that is directly adjacent to the proposed land site or project site. I'm firmly and strongly opposed to this. I happen to be one of the 35 homes that are directly adjacent to this proposed land use. Thirty-five homes that when we purchased these homes in 2021, we're told that the land was zoned something X. And after we purchased the homes, the land has been rezoned to something Y. Okay, so af, that, that, that's not, that's, that's part of the communication problem that the whole project has. Australia Mountain was never designed to be an all-inclusive community, okay? Most of us that live there know we drive 10 to 30 miles to do anything. We bought up there for that very reason, okay? All the amenities that are offered in an all-inclusive community, if you will, on the I-10 corridor is what we bought to get away from. We didn't want to bring that to us, or hopefully that it doesn't happen. I'm going to go down a few things here just real quickly. Communication's been poor on this at best. Only a handful of homes adjacent to this received the formal cards. I guess there's a 500-foot rule or some rule where you have to get, you get a card. There's only a handful of folks that actually live 500 feet by this. The rest of us that can see that open lot didn't get any communication. The, the proposed land use sign, the white sign, 99% of the people that live in the communities that surround this don't see it because of where it was positioned down by the fire station. Safety's a real issue. You're going to hear somebody talk on that in a minute. Crime, it's inevitable. Statistically, crime will go up in the way of violent crime, drug, drug use, vandalizing, break-ins, and illegal dumping. The statistics show that for, for homes and communities associated or adjacent to these facilities. I'm going to go ahead and skip, skip ahead here real quick. You've heard the, you've heard some, some folks talk about noise and downplay the noise. A 14-foot building that has 26 industrial-grade AC units on the top of it with nothing in between that and the homeowner is going to spill noise into the surrounding communities. It's inevitable. So let's not get caught up in that it looks great, and that our own AC units that are trapped inside our own four walls, you know, that this is going to be less than that. That's, that, that can't be the case, won't be the case. I'd ask that the, the council reject this storage unit on the basis of some of the matters I've talked about. This does not bring value to the Australia Mountain community. We need more things such as professional services and whatnot, okay? Not a storage unit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Mayor. Ryan Gusterson.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. There was a neighbor of mine that couldn't be here tonight for medical reasons, so he asked me to, gave a statement for me, so I'm going to read it for him. Be a good neighbor. I ain't going to do it as good as he can, but you hear him talk, he's an awesome guy. But I'll try my best here. So his name is Neil Wilson. His main concern with the storage facility is the lack of safety for the residents of Estrella, as well as the environment. When we talked about how you have to sign to say that you don't, aren't bringing in any flammable materials or any hazardous materials into, into the facility itself. We found out last time in the Planning and Zoning Commission, all that is required is you have to sign something that says you are not bringing anything in there. There's no enforceable way for them to do it. They said they have cameras, but they can't actually have the person open their storage unit, is from what my understanding is, to inspect to see what is in there. So that is, is one issue that he did bring up. In just a signed piece of paper, there's no way to determine what's in the unit. Storing flammables, accelerants, toxic chemicals, explosive antiemissions are all possible and highly dangerous to the residents, and especially the ecological-sensitive area in which the facility will be located. As we all found out last December in Mesa, when a storage unit fire got out of control and burnt down to the ground, and now is being investigated even more into what was the cause of that. However, Neil does point out that in that particular one, there was commercial, it was away from commercial residents, or it was from, it was in a commercial facility away from residents, and retaining walls helped to build the fire. away from residence, and retaining walls helped to build the fire, or helped to retain the fire. There's also no real plan that was given by them of how they can suppress, other than a Class A fire, nothing with, with how it could prevent from hazardous material substances. And water will only effectively suppress a Class A fire. And the other types of fire protection system that uses inert gases like nitrogen, argon, mixture of them to reduce oxygen concentration in the area. So the last statement here is, so Mayor and Council members, after this, if you're still leaning towards voting yes on the storage facility located near homes in environmental-sensitive dry desert area, then at a minimum, hold the business, hold the builder accountable for the safety and well-being of the residents and environment by having them build retaining walls and implement an inert gas fire suppression system. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Another one?
Actually, I just have three cards that they do not wish to speak, but they oppose the Stafford.
They're all opposed? Okay. All right, with that, let's see, where are we? Close the public hearing. Council, please meet a motion a second on the approval of the use permit request for a storage facility on approximately 9.12 acres located within the portions of lots 9.32, 9.37, and 9.38 on the Montecillo land use map. Within the 2022 regulatory standards booklet adopted by ordinance number 2022-1544, as reflected in a preliminary site, the property is subject to stipulations. Let's open for council discussion. Who do we have first? Councilmember Gillis?
I, first of all, I appreciate everybody's input on what's going on, and I understand it to a point. I have a home in Estrella Mountain Ranch, and so does Sheri Lortano also. So we feel a little bit differently than some of you feel, and I have been there since 12, and you've been there since?
Twenty-one years.
She's been there 21 years, so longer than me. We look at this as we are excited about something like this. We want a place for RVs like Pebble Creek has.
It doesn't have anything like that?
There's nothing like that? Okay, well, that's, that's what I want to be sure. Who, who is responsible? Who can I get to stand up and talk about this? Can you stand up and answer some of my questions? Because I don't have some more questions. I have quite a few questions, actually, since I have a home up there. So tell me what exactly, there is no place for RVs, because I was under the impression that there was.
Correct. There is no RV storage on the property. However, you would be allowed to, the units, the outside storage units?
Right.
Are large enough to fit like golf carts or ATVs or smaller toys like that?
But not motorhomes.
But not a motorhome.
Like, like Pebble Creek has?
Correct. Not a motorhome.
So do they plan on, on having something like that eventually?
Maybe if the market demand is there. It was in our initial planning design.
Okay, that's what I, that would make a sense, yeah.
To have RVs in the back.
Right.
And just currently, the demand wasn't there, so maybe if that changes in the future, but...
Yeah, have you seen what's over in Pebble Creek? The storage over there?
I'll let the owner know.
Also, that there is, we have a lot of people from out of state personally, that come and visit with trailers and, and, you know, motorcycles and different things that need a place to put them, because we cannot have them on the streets or in our driveways in Estrella Mountain Ranch. And so they have to take them somewhere.
Yeah, motorcycles would fit as well.
Motorcycles would fit.
Yeah, just not like a large Class A RV. The, the buildings aren't tall enough.
But that is something that we could think of for later.
I mean, if the demand is there and if the owner decides to bring that to the planning department.
Pardon me, but we are holding a meeting here, and I would like to hear what she has to say. Go ahead.
Yeah, Councilmembers. So if the demand proves to, to hold RVs, and if the owner would like to do that, then we'll bring that to planning and zoning, and we'll go through the same design process that we're going through.
Okay, because there were some people that really did think that there were RVs, including myself, and I have a home there.
Yeah, sorry.
So, you know, that's something I think we need to look into or talk about.
Of course, sure.
So motorcycles, you said, would fit there?
Yes.
Okay. Golf carts would fit there. As far as the aesthetics, can I see the picture of the place again, of the actual, what it's going to look like?
The images on the screen, the larger one in the background at the top, that is what faces Willis Road.
Okay.
So this would be as you were driving in from the, coming from the north, heading south. This would be the first right-hand turn into the facility. This main corner, prominent, is where the rental office is, and then further down, the center of the building is a loading area. It's a loading lobby. Then all these stalls are only standard-sized parking stalls in the front. So if you had something that was a larger moving truck, we would recommend that you go to, there's a secondary loading lobby on the opposite side, interior to the site, so behind the two gated entrances, so that that moving vehicle traffic could be more in the back.
Okay, and then can I see the other side also, please?
Yeah, actually, those are in my presentation.
Because it's very important to me about what the aesthetics look like, and how much shrubbery and stuff is going to be around it, because Estrella Mountain Ranch is beautiful. So we want to make sure that we keep it looking that way.
I'm going to skip some of these. Going to the landscaping, just real quick.
Yes.
This is our landscaping. This is prior to the staff stipulation of adding landscaping to the northwestern portion of all the retention basin.
Okay.
So that is happening and has already been submitted for our site plan.
Okay.
Application, including that. This slide just doesn't have it. But the Willis Road, which is on the south portion of this image down here, we are proposing all of the city right-of-way improvements with the improved Willis Road, bike lane, the two right-turn lanes into the facility, the detached eight-foot mandarin sidewalk, and all the landscaping enhancements that go with it. Then we have, the property is lined with trees and shrubs, as well as shrubs, foundation landscaping up against the buildings. And then per a separate design review that we went through with the Australia Mountain HOA, they also requested that we add additional trees to the south side of this roll-up building, so we did accommodate that in our plan as well.
And that's a for sure?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
Because that's important to me, the landscaping, as well as the other. Okay, that's what I wanted to see. Go back to that. Yes, okay, yes.
Okay, so this top image is the eastern side facing Willis Road.
Yes.
Again, our rental lobby here on the right, and then a loading, specific tenant loading lobby. These, I also like to mention for securities, I know that's a concern. All of these doors are locked, so these loading lobbies that are facing Willis Road and then the opposite one, interior to the site, they do have key code card, key code access to them. It's very specific to their tenant lease, so everyone gets one specific to them. And usually, we've seen in the past, then be combinations of like your unit number, social security card, something that was like purposely designated to that tenant that wouldn't be easily figured out. And then it's obviously never reused if you ever end your lease. Addition to the physical locked entries to the building, there is two gates as well that you also have to input your code in to even get through the gate to get to the rear.
So there's quite a bit of security that's been planned for this.
Correct, and then cameras all over, inside and out. We like to say that there's no blind corner so that, you know, every aspect of the facility can be seen. Then the other two, same problem Guadalupe is having, the keyboard, the northern side, this is what faces the Australia Mountain Residential property. So again, this is interior. There is actually a drive and a landscape buffer prior to seeing this elevation, if you're looking at it from the residential side. And then the south elevation, this is internal, because again, there is a drive and a roll-up building that is blocking these interior doors. So no storage doors can be seen from the public.
Oh, okay. Well, that's even better.
And again, these are those same images, and then there's a couple more of those lobby areas, and then this is the distant side.
Okay. And then also, who, who did the test on this noise level that they're talking about? Okay, explain that so that we know what's going on there, because that concerns me.
Sure. So we hired an acoustical engineer to do the noise study. The city of Goodyear does not have a specific level of decibels in their planning and zoning ordinance. They just have the term spilling of what noise spilling should not go past your property. And some of what comes mitigation purposes with that would be screen walls, landscaping, parapet walls, extra mechanical screening to help dampen or lessen that noise from spilling outside of your property. So our noise study, the last point in here, analyzed to the best of our ability. It is a vacant lot. There is nothing built on it, so we do have to rely on other studies to look at the standards of noise levels for each of these items, and then do the research. Our engineer used the brand of mechanical unit that we are proposing for the property, which hasn't been fully developed. We do not have permit drawings created, but the brand we are probably going to use, they use the largest unit at the largest decibel that that brand of mechanical unit comes in to do their analysis. And they did go to the site for one site visit at the initial of the study to figure out what the current ambient noise is, so that it could be compared to the projected noises of several of these items that you see here on the screen, between the roll-up doors, the gates, the mechanical units, the dumpster, potential people talking, doors closing from your vehicle. Those are all the items that were in the study. And with all of that, we came up with 44 to 45, less than 45 decibels.
Okay. Okay, I think that is all I need from you right now. I do want to talk to Paul Louisi, our Chief of Fire. I also want to talk to Jimmy Santiago, who is our Chief of Police. I would like both of you to talk on this, please, because there were comments made about hazardous items, and I know that is a concern. And, you know, I remember renting an apartment way back in my college days, and somebody said, you know, "We can come through at any time we want to check on something." I don't know if we can do that at the city, but how, Paul, do we find out if, in fact, people are putting stuff in there that could be dangerous to our citizens that surround this area?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Paul Louisi, Fire Chief. So each business in the city is inspected on an annual basis. These buildings are equipped with automatic fire sprinkler systems, which should suppress most fires. But it is both a passive and also an active inspection on an annual basis. So the inspectors will go through each floor, go by each unit. While we can't enter those units, we can look for any signs of smells, any signs of, you know, foul play that may be going on. And then from there, we'd obviously have to work with our PD partners and reps on site to try to gain access to that at, at some point.
Right. And obviously, our fire station up there, Paul, is, is very well-equipped to deal with something if we do have a fire up there, correct? Because it's right there.
Yeah, correct. As, as with any of our fire stations in the city, they are equipped to handle any emergency.
Right. How, how do you feel about something like this? I mean, you feel that this, this is something could be handled by our fire department with not a problem?
Yes. I mean, we have many storage facilities throughout our city, all in varying sizes and shapes. So we really have no concerns with them.
So our constituents would be fine and safe?
Correct.
Fine, all right. Can I, can, thank you, Paul. Can I talk to Chief Santiago, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hi, Chief. I am concerned about the, the, what else was said about the statistics up there, which I know you are very well aware of, and there were some statistics, some statistics thrown out that I'm not so sure that I'm with. So can you tell me what the statistics are on crime up there, increased crime? You know, we have police up there, I know that, that's fully ready and willing to do what they need to do. Do you feel that there would be any more crime up there than is there now from this?
No, I do not. Do, can crime happen there? Yes.
Of course, yeah.
Although statistics, I didn't hear any numbers. I just heard types of crime that people had mentioned. But like any of the other facilities that we have throughout our city, I mean, we would tackle that crime if it started happening, not only working between our Criminal Investigations Division, our Community Services Unit to work with actually the staff there, or the homeowners, or, you know, the owners of what's being taken or reported, but I don't see any additional crime that isn't significant, in a sense, no different than Safeway or some of the other businesses up there.
Yeah, I didn't hear any, any numbers either, but I did, did hear that there were statistics that didn't support what we were trying to do up there, or whatever crime would be coming in. And that was my question is, do you feel it would be more crime, less crime, you know, about the same? Like you said, that's kind of what you're saying, is no different than what's at the Safeway or anything like that?
Right. And we would work with the business owners like we would with any business owner. Our officers are assigned to a beat. They're patrolling those areas 24/7. We would know who's there, who's not there, things to that nature, but...
So you don't really anticipate, I mean, an increased amount of crime? I mean, I care about it because I live up there also. So you don't really anticipate, you, you feel comfortable with it?
Yes, I feel comfortable with it going in there. No different, like I say, than any of the other businesses that are throughout our city.
And we do have sufficient police up there handling the area, correct?
We do. We have squads that are working out of there. We have additional squads that we're adding down there. Like I say, everything is broken up by a beat area. There's an officer assigned to that beat.
Right.
In, in that district, and they patrol that, and they work with the community hand in hand.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
And Sheri and I are very well aware of this, because we've lived up there for quite a while, so we are aware of what's going on up in Estrella. And I do know that there's a lot of officers up there, fire and police, because they've been to my home many times. So I just want to say, for those that aren't, that aren't convinced, please try to take some solace in hearing what our chief just said, because they've been here a long time too. They're trying to, to help us figure out what is good for us up in an area like that. And quite frankly, I personally have been waiting for something like this. The hours of this being opened again, where, what, what were the hours again? Who can tell me that? We have, we have a way of doing things here in this room. Let's be professional. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
Mayor, Councilmembers. The applicant proposes to be open seven days a week with proposed hours of operation for their office from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and facility hours of operation from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Okay, so that, so we're not talking till midnight or anything like that? We're talking people coming and going no later than 10:00 p.m.?
That is correct. 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay, that pretty much answers a lot of my questions. I have, I have, my, my main thing would be is the toxicities and the crime, especially living up there myself. And I have complete, complete confidence in our police department and in our fire department, and, and have for a very long time. I've lived in the city for quite a while now, and I have complete confidence in these two chiefs and our departments. I've worked closely with them, and I just want to say, you know, give it a chance. If it's going to go through, give it a chance, because I'm telling you, you couldn't have two better chiefs than sitting over there. And we are very lucky in this town to have as good a police and fire departments. And I've worked in a lot of different cities, Seattle, Washington for one, Washington State, and I'm telling you, they got some problems. We are very lucky in this city. I just want to let you know that, to try to make you feel a little bit better. We, we don't take questions at this point. Because, because I'm letting you know with assurance, this, this is, we don't take, we don't take questions.
Let's just, please.
And that's, that's, I'm letting you know with assurance, I have confidence in these two men. All right, that's all. Stay married.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lortano.
Well, I want to thank everybody that's come here to speak on behalf of that. I want to thank the applicant for looking at Goodyear, and I think what's important, I think what's important when we look at these use permits, is it the right project for the right spot? And that's one thing I look at. We have another one of these on... We have another one of these on the docket later today. There is a need for storage facilities.
Yes.
There are older people that are downsizing. There are people whose kids are coming back from college. I would love to have it, you know, instead of my den being filled with stuff for the summer. There are people, realtors, who own businesses that need a place to put their signs, their staging furniture in between it. There's a lot of people that have started home businesses during the pandemic that are down there. So there are a lot of people that can use this. These are your neighbors that are going to be using these type of facilities. So I think that's very important. I was sorely disappointed that there was not RV storage and boat storage, and people groan at that. But if you think about that, if you've gone to one of those RV shows, those coaches go upwards four or five hundred thousand dollars. They're as much as a house, some of these coaches and boats. And I know people like to have them close to where they live, because they cost so much money, so they can check in them. We also have a really high Canadian population that does summer out here. A lot of them Airbnb their houses, especially around the Montecito area. And a lot of those people, you know, if you Airbnb your house, you either have to lock up closet, or take it with you, or take it down the hill. So I've talked to people, it's like, I'd love to have a place to put my golf clubs and my stuff, so when the, you know, when we Airbnb our house, when we're not here, we don't worry about someone taking it. So there are uses. I want to tell you what I did to look around the valley at other storage facilities. I drove, I pulled aerials to see what they are. There are storage facilities near homes, near Sun City, near Ganey Ranch, near La Ciendas in Mesa. There's one near Verado that are near houses, so that is not uncommon. There's a little difference there that I'm going to speak about in just a minute. For those of you that said Estrella was not to be a complete community, that is a hundred percent incorrect. Estrella was built by, it was the vision of Charles Keating. Those original continental homes around the lake are the original Estrella and the Two Lakes. He is the gentleman that also built, for those of you that haven't lived, I've lived out here since seventy-five, and in Goodyear since ninety-five, okay? So I've lived out in Estrella twenty years, Goodyear about thirty years. And the valley, we're not even going to do the math. But he is the same individual that built the Phoenician, okay? He lost it all in the Lincoln's Thrift, saving his loans in, I think it was the eighties. And then it went to receivership, it was bought out, and then it went to Sun Chase, and then Newland, I think there's probably been an owner in between, and then to the current people. So that's the story. So it was intended to be a self-sufficient community, and it goes way back there. A lot of people on some of the websites I've been following were complaining about, concerned about views, and about noise, and about wildlife. Well, I'm going to tell you, and that, that's what people said when they became to want to build Cantomea. Don't build out there, that's where the wildlife goes. We don't need a retirement community out here, we have Pebble Creek. And you know what? They're wrong. We are very blessed that we have an option, because there's a whole different vibe to Cantomea than there is to Pebble Creek. And that's a good thing. So, you know, a lot of people say that, and I'm going to channel our former mayor, Georgia Lord, who used to tell people, as she used to, "I'm a former realtor, you only bought, you didn't buy the mountain view, you bought the view fencing, but only in your square." I have view fencing where I live. And I'll tell you, my view has changed. I now, when I look out through my view fencing, I can see the lights of the Walmart distribution facility in Buckeye. I can see Anderson. It has changed. But it's their property, they're allowed to do what they want to do with it. So I think that's very important to remember. We don't sit up here as a council, like a Sims game, and say, "This property is going to go here, and this one's going to go here." It is zoned, and there's a lot of stuff that could go there that you may not like. And it could be worse. A tire store could go there. You're not going to get a restaurant there any time in my lifetime. There's just too much open commercial between Cantomea and where the Safeway is. Look at the Frogo, it's been empty since two thousand and twelve, or ten, two thousand and eight? So you look at the property, there's other places that there's commercial spots that are going to go in first. So we're a growing community, we need all types of things. So that's what's really important. Now, I think one of the important things that I looked at is when I looked at the plan. How does it fit into the community? And I have some very grave concerns. It's not about the storage facility itself, because we do need one of those. But this specific facility, when I look at it, it seems to lack the four-sided architecture that we seem to like here in Goodyear. I am not impressed with the layout of it, especially when I'm looking at the next storage facility two downs, it's an interior storage facility. Several years ago, there was a storage facility planned up by the lake. And it was, it was just, people went crazy. And unfortunately, that one was going to be basically built on a structure of a Class B office building, that if the storage facility, they didn't want to do it anymore, they could have just made tenant improvements and made it a Class B office at some point. But they pulled it because people were just very mean to the, I mean, it was probably the worst, one of the worst meetings, as opposed to some recent ones we've had. So I look at this facility, if it was interior, I think that also helps the noise complaints. I think it also helps any of the complaints about people coming and going, because when you're interior, it's more of a building, it's going to be higher. That's true, if you have that, so that might be a consideration. I do not like the aesthetics of this, I do not think it fits in with the community. It looks to me, and I don't want to be rude, but it's not, it looks like a kind of a long, old-fashioned shopping center to me, is what I see here. And it needs some improvement. The fact that it's a storage facility a hundred percent, I'm not as worried about. We will need one, and we will get one. But I think it needs to be done right, and I know you guys did a lot of work here, but I think it does need lots of improvement. So I will not be voting in favor of it in its current form, in that location, in that form. So thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
Thank you. So, I have some questions first. So I just clarifying questions. So I understand the height, I just want to compare, I don't know if someone can come up and talk to me about it, but the height, what is, how is it compared to a single-family or a two-story home around the general area? I know it's twenty-six feet?
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton, Mayor, Councilmembers. The height of the building is twelve feet to the roof line. Let me double-check my numbers here. Seventeen feet to the top of the parapet, and twenty-six feet to the highest point of the pitched roof.
I just want to see, how is that compared to our current, like a residential home, for example? Is it comparable? Is it taller than a single-story?
A singles, a two-story, single-family home can be up to thirty feet. So this at a maximum of twenty-six feet at the pitched roof is less than a two-story home height of thirty feet.
Okay, because I know, understand it can be twice as much? The height, it's zoned right now, it could, something else could go there tomorrow, that could be twice as high?
The uses that are permitted by right can be up to a maximum height of fifty feet or three stories.
Yeah, okay. That was my one question. And then, I understand, reading through the stipulations and everything, or the criteria, only certain uses, a restaurant can't go into this area because of it's so close to the water retribution facility?
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton, Mayor, Councilmembers, that is correct. A restaurant is not a, in the list of permitted uses by right in this P A D zones due to its proximity to the water reclamation facility and its order and noise easement.
Yeah, so only certain uses, like something like this can be in that area that's so close to that, to that use, to the water rec facility and the fire station. So I just want to clarify that. And then, and right now, you, the applicant brought a lot, there's a lot of stipulations on this. So no RVs, boats, and to your point before, if that was to come, that'd have to come back to us if this passed as-is, with the stipulations, that'd have to come back to us if it ever decides to be other than indoor uses at this point.
That is, that is correct, Councilmember Hampton, Mayor, Councilmembers. The current use permit before you includes a stipulation that the property should not have any outdoor RV storage, or any other outdoor storage. If the applicant would like to come back to the city and go through this, a use permit amendment process, that requires the same public hearing, the same process that we're going through, recommendation by Planning and Zoning Commission and approval by City Council, they could do that at a later date.
Yeah, and it looks like they're upgrading also the street in front of it as well. Twelve-foot travel line, six-foot bike lanes, landscaping, sidewalks, things like that as well, so...
That is correct.
And then, the lighting itself, it's all directional, it's not going to spill out. It's directional to the actual facility itself, which is great, because we, I know we've done that with the city of Goodyear with our streetlights here, where we've made them more directional as well, so they don't spill out. Such I appreciate. And then the fifty percent lower, lower lumen level as well, which is great as well, so... And going back, I know we talked about the decimals, it seems, it seems pretty low, which I think is good. I mean, I listened to Steve Johnston talk about the noise study, and Jeff talk about crime and dumping. I think they talked about that as well, well, and Ryan, and with Neil, talk about the safety and the environment and things like that. I feel the stipulations have really addressed a lot of that. So I appreciate people coming out, but I'll be, I'll be voting yes for this one. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Before I was appointed to council in 2018, I would come to city council meetings like this and sit in the audience. And when these kind of cases came forward, they were very difficult, because there's a lot of emotion with the residents. And also channeling Mayor Lord, when she would talk about the views, you don't get to buy the view, but no matter what was said to you when you made your purchase, somebody else owned the land, and you, they can't make a commitment to what that land will be. And it's been zoned commercial for a long time. I think what you desire there is definitely limited, because you're by a wastewater treatment plant. We call it reclamation, but it's wastewater treatment. You have a fire station, you have APS. So that really limits the type of things you could have. The storage is a very passive building. I'm pleased that they didn't take the full height that they were entitled to do. I think the stipulations really take care of a lot of the resident concerns. And I find the building to be attractive, so I think it'll, I think it will fit in. The council members who spoke before brought up all the question areas that I had also. I think this is a thing that has been very well-vetted, but this is a project that I will support.
Thank you. I had the questions for Chief and for both chiefs. I've only lived in Goodyear twenty-four years. I have not ever seen a storage fire in Goodyear. But I'm sure there are other places that there are storage fires. And I do know that we need storage facilities, because where I live, I think the builder thought we were all going to come here and hibernate, and get rid of all the stuff we had accumulated for all the years we had been traveling. And we get, and it doesn't fit in our house. So we have two storage units, just to keep what we need to keep. And I think a storage unit is very beneficial to a lot of people, as Councilmember Laurentano said, because we have so many snowbirds that need places to store certain things that they bring with them, or that they use periodically. I have a son who owns a business, who has two storage units, just to keep parts for his business in. So I know how important it is for the small business owner to have a facility that they can use, and they want them close to their house, so that they can go in and out. It appears to me, the design of this, there'll be no traffic behind the building to disturb the wildlife or anyone that would be facing the building. And are any of the homes that face the building a two-story home? Do we know? I looked, I didn't see one. Maybe I didn't drive down the right street yesterday, but it looked like everything was a single-story.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Mayor, Councilmembers, I am actually not sure myself as well if there are any two-story homes in the Segovia community, which I've mentioned are approximately eight hundred feet from the nearest building in the mini-storage facility.
Right. And I thought I understood that it was like three hundred and ninety-nine feet roughly to the property, just to the property line, and then to the building was close to eight hundred feet?
That is correct.
Okay. And also, I have a question for our attorney. Mr. Mathie, would you kindly explain to the public what the state statute says that we have to do when we are notifying someone through planning and zoning? Please? It's not our decision, we're governed by a state statute that tells us exactly how to do it, and what we have to do by law.
Ms. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, it's under our zoning code, and the notification process is five hundred feet within the surrounding area. So the Planning and Zoning Department typically sends out notification cards to any residents within five hundred, if they want to talk about the process, as well as posting the property with the signage.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell, Mayor, Councilmembers. That is correct, the state statute does provide directions for staff to, for city jurisdictions to follow, and the city zoning ordinance does require that residents within five hundred feet of the subject property are notified of the project. The sign is posted on the property, and a legal advertisement is published in the newspaper, advertising the public hearings.
Okay, thank you. And my last comment is that this property has not been rezoned since two thousand and eight?
That is correct, Councilmember.
Two thousand and eight is when this property was rezoned. It wasn't just rezoned last year, or the year before, or the year you bought your property. So this has been on the books since two thousand and eight, what could be built on this property. So that's all I can, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Wally, did you want to talk to Jimmy too, or you're good?
Oh, sorry. Excuse me.
Yes.
So Chief, you agree with me, we haven't had a storage fire? Please, yes or no? It's not a trick question?
It's a memory question. Councilmember Campbell, not that I can recall, and if we did, they're typically small. In our fire code, it requires that they are sprinkled, so those would keep those at bay. But I cannot recall one in recent memory.
Okay, and every unit in this storage unit will have a sprinkler system inside the unit, so if should a fire break out, the sprinkler system would go on, everybody?
Automatically, yeah, automatically.
Automatically, okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
And Chief Rodriguez, my only question, and you partially answered it, have you had any additional police calls to a storage unit other than perhaps someone saying that they misplaced their property? Has there been any violent crimes? Have there been any homeless? Have there been any drugs? Have there been any of the stuff that people are so worried that might come into there? Or have we dealt with any of that?
Mayor and Council, Councilmember Wally Campbell, I'm sure there are some other calls out there. I don't have the research, or haven't done the research of those calls, but I'm sure that there are domestic violence calls, you know, anything that you would get at a regular business could happen there at a storage facility. So nothing that comes to mind that was, you know, obviously significant, but I'm sure we've had issues like we have at other businesses throughout the city.
And you have the ability to view all of their surveillance tape, because they have everything under camera?
Yes, so as long as the business is cooperative, if not, we will turn to search warrants or get other means if we need to capture that footage to investigate a crime for any victim.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
You're good? Katie, just a real quick question, clarification. I think there's been some confusion on the zoning, and can we get a clarification? I think there's been some confusion on the zoning, and can we get a clarification on that? It's been zoned from, um, business parks since, what, two thousand and eight? The change that happened recently had to do with the PAD, which added, what, more residential in the area there, but had nothing, correct me if I'm wrong, but had nothing to do with changing that particular parcel to a business park or commercial? Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That is correct. Estrella is a master plan community, and so the zoning and planning documents cover large areas of land. The Montecito zoning document covers all the way up to Calistoga. It's a very large area, so anytime there's a change anywhere in this large area, the whole PAD gets updated, because it's a single book. So this piece of property that we're talking about tonight, the zoning has not changed since two thousand and eight. If anyone called us in the Planning Department to ask us what could be built there, we would tell them it's planned for a business park, and go through the different types of uses that could be built there. And the zoning changes in two thousand and twenty-two were on the residential areas to change some of the development standards and lot sizes.
Yeah, I think it's important to make that clarification. Thank you. With that, I don't see anything else popping up here. With no further discussion, go ahead and open the voting. Passes seven, uh, five-one. Thank you. Next public hearing to consider is a use permit for a convenient use and quick-trip gas station at Yuma and one hundred and seventy-third Avenue. Back up again.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Guadalupe Ortiz-Cortez, Planner. The request before you is for a use permit for a quick-trip. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Yuma Road and one hundred and seventy-third Avenue. The property is shown on the screen by the orange outline. The property is on PAD, planned area development, and has an underlying C2 general commercial designation. The zoning for the property was approved in nineteen ninety-nine. The property is north of the Cotton Flower Neighborhood and Cotton Flower Marketplace, where there is an Esport of Fitness, Federico's Drive-Thru Restaurant, and there is a Blackrock Coffee and Salad and Go under construction as well. The Kenyon Trails Town Center is east of the property, across from Cotton Lane and the future Loop Three-O-three. The site is approximately three acres in size. In this closer view, you can see the Cotton Flower Neighborhood and Marketplace to the south, the Hillstone, excuse me, the Hillstone Residence to the west, and the Crestwood at Kenyon Trails Neighborhood to the north. The city approved a master site plan for the entire northeast corner of Yuma and one hundred and seventy-third in two thousand and seven. The master site plan has since expired. The area on the screen shows the quick-trip in relation to the nearby residential neighborhoods. The subject property is approximately a hundred and fifty feet from the residential neighborhood to the south, that's Cotton Flower Neighborhood, and the subject property is approximately four hundred feet from the residential neighborhood to the north, that is Crestwood at Kenyon Trails Neighborhood. The applicant proposes a five thousand three hundred square foot convenience store in an eight thousand square foot fuel canopy with a capacity to serve up to twenty vehicles. The applicant is providing the required vehicle parking spaces and required landscape. Access to the site is proposed from a right-in, right-out access on, access driveway on Yuma Road, a right-in, right-out access drive on one hundred and seventy-third Avenue, as well as a second driveway on one hundred and seventy, one hundred and seventy-third Avenue that will provide full access. The proposed elevations include a variety of materials. The elevations are similar to the QT at the southwest corner of Bullard and McDowell Roads. The proposed fueling canopy elevations match the proposed convenience store building elevations. The application meets the use permit and convenience use evaluation criteria as established in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the quick-trip use permit is compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area. A residential, the nearest residential is approximately a hundred and fifty feet to the south with Yuma Road within that distance. The residential neighborhood to the north is approximately a hun, approximately four hundred feet from the subject property. It is expected that other commercial uses will locate within this five hundred, excuse me, within this four hundred feet of distance in the future. The city has not received proposals for other commercial uses within this commercial center at this time. The quick-trip proposes twenty-four-hour operations. Given the future commercial uses and road separation between the Crestwood and Cotton Flower Neighborhoods, it is anticipated that the operation of the convenience use, including the proposed twenty-four-hour operations, will not have any detrimental effect on this residential development. A traffic study was submitted and reviewed with this use permit application. The applicant is working with city staff and ADOT as plans for the Loop Three-O-three progress. The citizen review and public hearing processes were followed. A neighborhood meeting was held on April nineteenth. When residents attended the meeting, the resident expressed concern with noise, smells, and potential crime arising from the proposed use. Staff also received an email in support of the project. A resident expressed their excitement about the QT possibly going on the property. The resident that attended the neighborhood meeting also attended the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing on June fourteenth to express her opposition to the project. No other opposition or support was expressed at the hearing. The use permit requests meet city requirements. Staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the use permit, subject to the stipulations found in the staff report. Mayor, councilmembers, this concludes my presentation. The applicant is in attendance tonight.
Would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, thank you very much for your time. My name is Daniel Chambers. I work for QuickTrip Corporation. I office out of one-one-one-six East Broadway Road in Tempe, Arizona. I just wanna say that we're very excited about bringing a new facility to the city. We look forward to working with you. I think staff did a great job of working with us and outlining all the stipulations that we need to follow, and the requirements. I'm here to answer any questions, if you guys have any. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
No cards? Well, then let me go ahead and close the public hearing. Would the council please enter a motion in a second to approve a use permit request for the convenience use of QuickTrip's convenience store with a gas station on approximately three acres of property zone, planned area development, with C2 general commercial designation located the southwest corner of, let's see, southeast corner, excuse me, of one hundred and seventy-third Avenue and Yuma Road, legally described in the plan on your site, planned for QuickTrip store number oh-four-oh-three. The property is subject to stipulations. Open for council discussion. I got a first, a second? All right, Councilmember Laurentano, you're up first.
Thank you very much. I talked to residents in that area, and there's definitely a need for, you know, a place to fill up, grab your coffee in the morning, so you don't have to go way the other direction, so this will be, is sorely needed. The building is very attractive for, especially for a convenience store, it has the four-sided architecture, the parapets, you can see from all sides, the red awning, so I think it will be a good fit for that area, especially as it builds out, so thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, thank you as well. Yeah, I live in that general area there as well, so I know the residents are, at least the ones I've talked to are pretty excited about to have this. That'll be the first real gas station to the Three-O-three as well, so a lot of people from Estrella Parkway, that'll be coming up and down the mountain, and then everybody lives in that general area getting, because that'll be the first, excuse me, that'll be the first real four-diamond intersection for, for the Three-O-three south there, so I think it'll be highly used, and I think very needed for that area, so I appreciate it. I know QT does a great job, so, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. The only question I had is maybe traffic, just the in and out. Is there a U-turn? So if I come out right-hand turn onto Yuma, is there a, can I, if I get to the light, is there a, can I U-turn back to get to the Three-O-three? Or is the only and best option to go off one hundred and seventy-third?
We have somebody coming up.
I don't know if that's the planning, or if that's a same-coast question, I'm not sure, so.
I think you got somebody here coming up.
Mayor and Council, Steve Cento, City Engineer, can you, can you repeat that to me, please?
Just how, it's the flow of traffic. I know she covered it, but I just wanted to verify if I'm trying, if I try to get in there, take a right-hand turn, and I wanna go back to the Three-O-three, it looks like the best option is the farthest north entrance and exit there? And I was just curious, if I wanted to come, take a right-hand turn, and there's that new light there off one hundred and seventy-third, can I take a U-turn there to get back to the Three-O-three, to go east on Yuma Road?
I don't believe that there is a median there today? So your best bet would be to come out of the northernmost intersection, and make a left onto one-seventy-third?
Okay.
And then a left onto Yuma, if that makes sense?
Yeah, it does. I just want, I'm just trying to see what it'd feel like when I'm there, so.
Absolutely.
Just something that maybe when we do build that road out completely, after ADOT, and between us and ADOT, that airway can flow freely with the traffics there, so.
Absolutely.
That's the only thing I had. I appreciate it. Like I said, I know residents that I've talked to are pretty excited about it, so thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm just gonna join in the chorus of comment, saying this is a greatly needed service for the residents in the, in the West Goodyear, gas station and grocery store, so we are getting a gas station, that's a big start. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. I wanna thank QT for giving us another station for our city. I love QT. The staff that you have there are professional, they're all in uniform, they're all friendly, they, they, they're very, it's very inviting to go in that store, and I feel very safe in that store. When I moved here, the only gas station we had was a Standard or a Chevron on Litchfield Road. That was it. We had to leave to go get gas and hope we didn't run out of gas before we got to the gas station, so we're delighted to have you here, and y'all are a wonderful community partner, and we do thank you so very much. You're welcome.
Yeah, there's not much to add to that, except, you know, I teach over Grand Canyon, and on my way to school, I do step in, and I will echo the fact that your stores are very clean, and the QT for a quick get-out, so to speak, you're very good at that, so I can get in and out before I head over to school to teach, and just keep that up. I, I know you have a reputation for keeping them clean and well-run, so thank you. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the voting. Passes six-zero. Thank you. All right, with that, let's see, next one up, public hearing, consider is a use permit for a Abrazo Litchfield Medical Building. Gonna open, public hearing? Go ahead and, you're back up again, go ahead and induce yourself for the public, please.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Guadalupe Ortiz-Cortez, Planner. The request before you is for a use permit for a medical building. The zoning ordinance requires that a hospital or medical building with overnight care goes through a use permit process. This proposal is for a medical building with overnight care. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of North Litchfield Road and West McDowell Road. The property is on PAD, planned area, planned area development, and has an underlying C2 general commercial designation. The zoning for the property was approved in nineteen eighty-nine. The site is approximately two point seven-five acres in size, and is located within the Palm Valley Pavilion's East Commercial Center. The subject property is located south of the Target and Michaels, east of the Shops Building, that includes a Starbucks and the Bell Spirit Day School. The property is north of the Abrazo West Wound Clinic and west of the Abrazo West Hospital. This is an infill pad. Patients will have access to the medical building from existing entrances to the commercial center off of Litchfield Road and McDowell Road. The orange outline on the screen shows the approximate area where improvements are proposed. The use permit proposal is for a forty-six thousand three hundred square foot two-story building with medical office and imaging in the first floor, and an overnight rehabilitation facility in the second floor. The proposed project provides the required parking spaces and landscape. The medical building will be connected to the adjacent Abrazo West Campus via an existing footpath, and an additional footpath that will be constructed with the medical building. The Abrazo Litchfield Facility will utilize resources from the Abrazo West Hospitals, such as dietary, physician rounding, and interchangeable staff. The medical building does not propose emergency or ambulance services. The proposed building design matches that of other buildings in the center, including materials such as stone, stucco, and includes a desert color palette. The west elevation is the front of the building and faces towards Litchfield Road. The east elevation faces the Abrazo West Campus. The north elevation faces the loading area behind the Target and Michaels, and the south elevation faces the south, and it's, sorry, the south elevation faces the parking area and the Wound Clinic as well. The application meets the use permit evaluation criteria established in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the use permit is compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area. The proposed use is similar to other commercial-type uses permitted on the property and existing in the Palm Valley Pavilion's East Commercial Center. The Abrazo West Wound Clinic, a similar use, is also located in the Palm Valley Pavilion's East Center. Other uses in the center include the Bell Spirit Day School, Target, Michaels, Red Lion Inn and Suites, and Raúl and Teresa's Mexican Restaurant, among others. A traffic study was submitted and reviewed with the use permit application. The traffic study found that the proposed development is not anticipated to cause detrimental impacts to the surrounding roadway network. The first floor of the medical building is, is expected to host imaging and medical offices. The first floor will be open from seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and seven AM to two PM on Saturdays. The second floor, the rehabilitation facility will be open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, with expected visitor hours from seven AM to seven PM. There will be onsite staff twenty-four, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Citizen review and public hearing processes were followed. To date, staff has not received any inquiries on the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their June twenty-eighth meeting. The use permit request meets the city requirements. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the use permit, subject to the stipulations found in the staff report. Mayor, councilmembers, this concludes my presentation. The applicant is in attendance tonight.
Applicant here, like to say anything at this time?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Jake Dinan, I'm Executive Vice President of PMB, we're a healthcare real estate development company, and we're the masterminds behind this, so we appreciate you taking this under consideration. When we go into a, a market as a medical real estate development company, we actually underwrite what the community needs, and this type of product is desperately, desperately needed in this community, to help put the right patient in the right care setting. Abrazo West Valley Hospital provides the inpatient rehab facilities now in the hospital. We're trying to decant that, so you can put the right patient in the right care setting, and provide, put the right provider with that patient, rather than kind of clogging up the, the healthcare system, so. And then there's a, a large need for the medical, clinical space on the first floor. We also own the theater conversion there, so we see that there's a massive need in this, in this market, and we get calls from physicians all the time, can we, do you have more space? Do you have more space? We don't, so we expect this one to fill up rather quickly, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Would the council please enter a motion in a second to approve the use permit requested for the development of an approximately forty-six thousand three hundred square foot hospital facility, on approximately two point seven-five acres parcel zone PAD, planned area development, with C2 general commercial underlying zoning, and located at one-three-seven-five North Litchfield Road, the property is subject to stipulations. Open for council discussion. We have a first and second? All right, so we have, first up, Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, thank you. No, I think-
Yeah, thank you. No, I think we love our hospitals, so I, that's really loud. I really appreciate the project coming to Goodyear, because you, like you said, I talked to a lot of residents that would rather have their medical, medical here local as opposed to having to drive north or, or, or east for that matter as well. So I do appreciate that. I definitely looking forward to this. I had a quick question for Ms. Cortez again on one of your slides, just how it fits in the community as well. I think it's a great, it makes sense. It's a great infill project for right next to the, to the hospital. I'm just curious, that slide there?
Oh.
Just, I just see the yellow line, but the proposed building, does it, it doesn't block the mixed retail or the Michaels, correct? I see the yellow box going up, but I see the proposed building looks like it shouldn't. I'm just curious if that, what, if it looks like it won't have an effect on those existing retailers, but I just wanted to verify that I wasn't misspoken.
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton. Mayor Councilmembers, that is correct. The proposed building does not affect the Michaels building. The figure outlined in the orange highlights the area of improvements, but the building is outlined here by the cursor and does not impact the Michaels or the Shops Building either.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I don't know, this is very detailed. It probably does not need to be a question, but just the people walking back and forth between the two buildings, is there going to be any kind of traffic mitigation or anything there? I know I am probably, I drive way too fast, probably behind shopping centers, so I'm just curious if there's any type of mitigation for people crossing more frequently there than there used to be for, are the residents there? I don't know, there's a little crosswalk. I don't, I'm not sure what that looks like.
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton. To confirm, is your question regarding foot traffic between the Abrazo West Campus and the proposed building?
Correct, correct.
Thank you. There is an existing footpath that has bolards to control the traffic only for pedestrians. The proposed new pedestrian footpath also will have bolards to control the traffic only for pedestrians. If the applicant would like to expand the use, they would contact us, and the appropriate mitigation measures would be reviewed.
Okay. I don't know if it needs to be. I just, sure, you can, your advocate wants to say something here?
To the right, on the right side, where you see the two arrows, the bottom arrow, that pedestrian footpath is already existing, and what, the staff all parks along that eastern face. So the traffic pattern there is only at major times where the staff is coming on or off of shift, so there's not a lot of through traffic through there. And then the vertical line on the right side, on the east side there, that's all for loading and unloading for Michaels, Target, major deliveries. So there isn't a lot of through traffic. All the major retail traffic is to the west of the mixed.
Okay. I just, that makes perfect sense. I'm just looking out for any patient hobbling across the street.
Absolutely. And the only people that'd be using those pedestrian paths are typically physicians running back and forth to take cover call in the hospital.
Perfect. Like I said, this is a welcome addition to the community, and I'm looking forward to approve it, so thank you.
Councilmember Lortano?
Thank you very much. I think this is a much-needed progress, project in our area to help with the hospital and to grow this area and our medical center. My only question is, is there a need for a way for car travel between the two buildings? Because Litchfield does get kind of busy and to go back and forth, or there's not going to be a lot of car back and forth. I don't know, so. I guess that's you.
Yeah, that is. Thank you for your question, Councilmember. I appreciate that. So to the north, where it cuts off, there's a Target Retail Box up the top. You can actually get to the Abrazo West Valley Campus without getting on McDowell or Litchfield, so you could drive and come back around. That is not necessary. Most people will use the pedestrian path just because they want to park in one location. I don't know if you've parked at the hospital recently, but it's not the easiest thing in the world to, if you're going to transfer back and forth, you're better off leaving your car here, so. But there is pedestrian, there is vehicular access without getting on McDowell Road.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to Goodyear.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. I have another question for you. Thank you. Is this going to be day surgery or medical procedures? I mean, I don't quite understand why we're doing this. I mean, I think it's a great idea, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything to help us so we don't have to drive to Sun City, I'm for it.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Campbell. There will not be surgeries in here. This is rehabilitation, so it's inpatient rehab, so.
Is it like who, the patients, when we send to Palm Valley, instead of doing that, we'll send them here?
So these are patients that are sick enough not to go home, but well enough not to be in the hospital.
Got it.
So stroke victims, cardiac arrest, COVID, a lot of COVID patients for respiratory would go in here and be monitored 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and then be rehabbed. And their typical stay in here is about 20 days, and then you're discharged to go home.
Okay, because it doesn't, Medicare allow 28 or something like?
Yeah, yeah.
We're limited with how long they can stay.
Yep.
To have the insurance coverage, so I get that.
Absolutely.
My next question is, I, I use that back way sometimes whenever I was going to get to Abrazas around Target, because you can zip right in and zip right out. Will we see a design eventually of the building and the colors and stuff, or what you showed us is what we're going to get? Do you know?
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Mayor Councilmembers, the applicant actually submitted a concurrent use permit and site plan supplemental. The, both of the applications have been submitted and reviewed concurrently. This is the final design of the building shown on the screen.
I like the design, but I do not like the color. I'm sorry. I just, everything we're doing is just like the color of dirt or the desert. It's all dark. It just is yucky.
Thank you.
But it's my yucky. Maybe it's not anybody else's yucky. I just, the building itself is fine, because it reminds me kind of what Abrazas really looks like now. So it's just a nondescript brown building.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
How are patients going to get to that building? Are they going to be transported on gurneys from, or ambulance from the hospital over? I mean, they won't just show up there to be admitted, right?
Two things. One, I'll address your first question, Councilmember Campbell. The color is part of the, it's called an OEA. It's an operating easement agreement and part of the CCNRs, if you will, of the retail development.
No, that was our fault thirty years ago.
I'm blaming you, yes. I apologize, but I'm kind of with you.
We keep trying to change it, and we just can't get a handle on it.
No. So, you know, we would maybe during our construction permit phase lighten it up or something. I don't know. But, so we're kind of dealt that hand, which is fine. And then your question regarding the transport of the patients, yes, they are, they will be wheeled in via gurney. There are two main entrances to this building. There's one on the south face on, to the, to the right of the building, if I can highlight on here or not. Oh, here we go. This is the main entrance to the inpatient rehab facility.
Is that facing Abrazas?
That's facing, no, it's facing west.
Facing west, got it.
Yep, so the main entrance. And then that's specific for the inpatient rehab facility. So if you're carted in there, you're going to be pushed right into an elevator. It goes up, and you're going to be discharged out the opposite door.
Perfect.
Nice and smooth, easy way to get in. And then for the clinical space, that's over here in this element. So you're not commingling the patients. You have the inpatient rehab, and then you have all the clinical space on the right-hand side. We do that for two reasons. One, you're required by CMS for the reimbursement that you mentioned, and then, two, they operate at totally different hours, so we want to segregate them.
I was just concerned where the ambulance would be bringing the patients. Are they going to be coming around Target? I don't know. Do they come Target?
Yeah.
Or do they go Michaels?
They, they would go Target down, yeah, similar to the way you're using it.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense. Okay, thank you. I'm very happy to see it there, and anything you can do to help our residents have additional hospital stay in a nice facility is really very welcoming here in Goodyear, so we don't have to ship them to Lundell.
Right? Yeah, thank you. Did you have anything to do with the other medical, like you turned the Palm Valley Theater into it?
I think you did.
Yeah, I'm just, just saying, you know, my wife's used it a couple of times. Did a nice job in there turning that into it, and this is going to be very near there, so it just adds to more of the medical that people can get locally versus traveling out somewhere else, so. I appreciate it. I think it's a worthwhile project. With that, let's go ahead and open up the voting. Pass is six-zero. Thank you. With that, the next public hearing item is to consider a special use permit for a mini storage on Lot B of Palm Valley Phase Two Commerce Park. Back up again, huh? Let's go ahead, open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Guadalupe Ortiz-Cortez, planner. The request before you is for a special use permit for a mini storage facility. The subject property is located at the northwest corner of North Litchfield Road and West McDowell Road. The property is shown on the screen by the orange outline. The property is Zoned PAD, Planned Area Development, and has an underlying C-2 general commercial designation. The zoning for the property was approved in 1999. The site is approximately two acres in size and is located within the Palm Valley Commerce Park. The property is located south of the Montessori and the Park School, east of the Vistas at Palm Valley Neighborhood, north of the Palm Valley Office Park, and west of the Haymaker Restaurant. In this center, there are also a few hotels, including the Hampton Inn, the Residence Inn, and a Home Two Suites approved administratively by staff about a year ago. Customers will have access to the storage facility from existing entrances off of Litchfield Road and McDowell Road as shown by the arrows in, on the screen. As mentioned, the property is Zoned PAD, C-2 general commercial. The permitted uses by right in the C-2 zoning district include adult bookstores, banks, business offices, funeral homes, hotels, trade schools, retail restaurant, and others. Storage facilities may be considered in commercial districts with a special use permit approval from City Council. The special use permit proposal is for a three-story mini storage facility. The proposed project provides the required parking spaces and landscape. The project's front is facing east towards the Haymaker Restaurant. The rear of the property faces the Vistas at Palm Valley Neighborhood. The project provides a rear building setback of 46 feet within its property. This 46 feet of setback include two 10-foot wide landscape strips and a 26-foot fire lane. In addition, there is a 30-foot landscape strip within the Vistas at Palm Valley HOA property before reaching the nearest residential property line. In total, there is a 76-foot setback from the mini storage building to the residence, to the nearest residential property line. Loading facilities are proposed on the north and south sides of the building. No uses are proposed to take place in the west side of the building facing the residential neighborhood. The proposed building design matches that of buildings in the surrounding area, including the use of angled roofs and incorporating stone and desert colors, and desert colors and their colors and materials palette. This west elevation faces the Vistas at Palm Valley Neighborhood. This east elevation faces the Haymaker Restaurant. This elevation includes their main entrance and the office. The building has a height of 38 feet to the top of the parapet wall, and at its highest points for the angled roofs, it has a height of 48 feet. The C-2 zoning district has a permitted maximum height of 56 feet. As mentioned previously, the proposed mini storage facility is providing a height of 38 feet to the top of the parapet and 48 feet where pitch roofs are provided to match the design of residential homes and hotels in the area. For comparison, the approved Home Two Suites in the same center has a height of 59 feet to the peak, including additional height for screening. The rear building setback standard for the zoning district is zero feet. The proposed project provides a rear building setback of 46 feet within its property. The applicant provided this section showing the distances from the Vistas at Palm Valley Residence to the mini storage facility. The application meets the special use permit evaluation criteria established in the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that the special use permit is compatible with the uses permitted in the surrounding area. Storage facilities are typically quiet buffers between residential properties and roads, as well as other commercial uses. The nearest residential neighborhood is adjacent to the prop, adjacent to the proposed mini storage facility. However, there is a total setback of 76 feet from the mini storage building to the nearest residential property line. As mentioned, this includes a 30-foot landscape strip within the Vistas at Palm Valley and two 10-foot landscape strips and a 26-foot fire access lane within the subject property. The proposed mini storage facility will have their office open from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. seven days a week. Customers will have access to the storage building from 6:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. Staff does not recommend any restriction to the hours of operation, given the property's location within a commercial center and given that all storage uses will be contained within the building. A traffic study was submitted and reviewed with the use permit application. The traffic study found that the proposed development is not anticipated to cause detrimental impacts to the surrounding roadway network. The property is required to comply with the city's Zone 2 lighting standards, which are designed to protect adjacent developments by requiring full cut-off lighting designed to not spill over to residential parcels. In addition, staff is recommending a stipulation that limits lighting on the rear of the property facing the Vistas at Palm Valley Neighborhood. Additionally, staff is recommending a stipulation that also prohibits lighted signage and lighting eight foot or higher on the west elevation to further protect the residence. The citizen review and public hearing processes were followed. Notices were mailed to surrounding property owners. A sign was posted on the property, and a legal advertisement was published in the newspaper. A neighborhood meeting was held on May 25th. One resident attended the meeting. The residents supported the project. Staff has not received additional inquiries on the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their June 28th meeting. The special use permit request meets city requirements. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the special use permit, subject to the stipulations found in the staff report. Mayor Councilmember, this concludes my presentation. The applicant is in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to say anything at this time?
Hello, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you so much. I'm, my name's Dan Gibson. I'm one of the owners of Abernathy Holdings, so I just wanted to thank you for hearing this project, and we are here to answer any questions, so.
Okay, thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Would the City Council please enter a motion and a second to approve the special use permit request for a mini storage facility on Lot Eight of the, of the final plat of Palm Valley Phase Two Commerce Park, recorded on February 13, 2007, in the official record of Maricopa County at Book 900 of MAPS, page 33, instrument 2007-0178682. The property is subject to stipulation. Open for council discussion. Go ahead, Councilmember Gillis.
Can I have somebody pull that picture back up again, as how close this is? Is it close to any of the golf courses? There was something I saw. I just wanted to be sure again. Or the golf course, I should say. Or the golf course, I should say.
Golf course ain't there no more.
Right. But I want to make sure that the, that the rest of it is not anywhere around this, correct? And it is three stories, correct?
Councilmember Gillis, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Perfect.
You're good?
Thank you, yep.
Councilmember Hampton?
Ms. Cortez? I had a question. I don't know if I saw it in the presentation or not. Is there, are there windows facing the residence on the west there? I couldn't tell from the elevations.
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton. There are no windows on the west elevation facing the vistas at Palm Valley Neighborhood. That is this elevation on the bottom of the slide.
Okay, no, that, that's, I think that's good. I'm sure they'd appreciate that, just being so tall. And then I noticed, I didn't see any resident opposition, none of the neighbors. It seemed like they were opposed to it at all there, right, in the planning and zoning, or no emails or anything like that, correct?
Councilmember Hampton, that is correct. Staff did not receive any inquiries to the project by email or by call. One resident did attend the neighborhood meeting. The resident was in support of the project.
Yeah, it seems like there's obviously demand. I was going through the applicant's PowerPoint as well. Makes me want to be an investor in a, in, in all these storage units, so. All right, I, I will be approving it. Thank you.
Councilmember Loretano?
Thank you very much for bringing this project. When I read your entire presentation, I think it brings up a lot of important points that this is what I envisioned closer to neighborhoods and closer to infill. I think this is a very well-done project. I like the fact that your hours are minimized. You have interior access, and that'll keep the noise so the neighbors won't hear the doors going up and down and up and down. It's sorely needed, these type of storage facilities, but I think yours looks very nice and very pleasant and will fit in well with the community with the variation of roof lines as well, so I'll be approving it. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Guadalupe, will you put the, will you please put the map up where it's actually located by Haymakers? Okay, that's good. So to get to the storage unit, will they go in between Haymaker and Chicago Pizza? That little drive there?
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Mayor, council members. Customers will have a few options to enter the site. There is a driveway into the center, Litchfield Road. There's this northern access drive. There is an additional access drive from Litchfield Road south of the Haymaker, as well as another one coming off of McDowell Road in between the Palm Valley Office Park parking and building.
So refresh my memory. I know that, that used to be my driving range where I'd go practice my golf. And then all of a sudden, it's gone, and then I used to play the executive course there at Palm Valley, and then all of a sudden, it's gone, and the vistas of Palm Valley is built, and they sell out in a month because it's so gorgeous over there. Did they ever, I know the road, we had a conversation about it when we approved the vistas. The road between, gosh, the road between Chicago Pizza and Haymaker, was that ever opened up into the vistas? I don't think it was. I think the only way you can get in and out of the vistas is off of Thomas.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. If I remember correct.
Litchfield. I mean, Palm Valley.
Oh, I'm sorry, Palm Valley Boulevard, not Thomas. Palm Valley Boulevard. That's the only way you can get in and out. So they're really secure in that community. That's what I'm getting at.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. That is correct. There is no access to the Palm Valley vistas from Litchfield Road and this drive. I believe this is only for fire purposes.
There is.
There is a gate for fire access if needed.
Well, yeah, but it's not, people using the storage aren't going to go through that gate.
That is correct.
Get in that gate. That's what I'm getting at. So if anything is going to be built in that area that's vacant, the storage unit is perfect there, I think.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you.
Good discussion. Nothing really to add, except to say it's a good infill, at least from my perspective. And out of that, it's close to the homes of the Dakota Storage to pick up some of that. So with that, go ahead and open up the voting, please. Pass is six zero. Thank you. The next public hearing item to consider is the rezone appropriate Litchfield and Lower Buckeye Road. Open public hearing. Ah, Steve, introduce yourself to the general public, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Steve Grecia, Planning Manager. I'll try to do as good as Lupe did, so we'll see.
I'm so sorry. I have a new watch. I don't, I don't know what it did.
Go ahead, go ahead, Steve.
Mayor councils, we do have a P80 amendment for you tonight. Go over location first. We're about 100 acres. And here's Phoenix Goodyear Airport, MC85. Property's right here, Lower Buckeye Road, Litchfield Road, Broadway Road. Kind of surrounding this property, City of Avondale to the east. Got a mix of agriculture, some ranchettes, some businesses here, but all zoned industrial within the City of Avondale. Kind of wrapping around, we have a substation here, Microsoft Data Center here, and an existing building that the applicant owns here, just to the north of this 100 acres. And a little history of the property. 2006, the 100 acres was part of a larger 120-acre, 128-acre rezone from Ag to Light Industrial to I-1. That building that was built on site about a year later, 2007, 500,000 square feet. Remained vacant until about 2019. That's when the applicant bought the property and that 104 acres. So, May 2023, the applicant, they got a site plan approved for the 100 acres. What's planned there, Data Center Campus, five buildings, about 400,000 square feet each building, 50 feet in height, which is the max building height, I should note, in the I-1 Light Industrial District. And this is that site plan that was approved. North is here, Lower Buckeye Road. And so we have those five 400,000-square-foot buildings. These dark lines are access drives around the buildings. This is Litchfield Road here. And this just zooms into one kind of pod. So here, the access drive around the building. Building here in the center. You have generated yards to the north and south of the Denver Data Center building. And what I should note, which will be important to this request, is the applicant is proposing rooftop equipment. That's where their chillers will go, on the roof of their data center buildings. And again, important to this request, I'll talk real quick about three zoning ordinance provisions that'll be, that'll apply. Industrial requirement, all rooftop equipment that needs to be screened from public view. Moving over to height, Article Eight in the zoning ordinance. We do allow, so the max height in the I-1 is 50 feet. We do allow certain structures to go up to 10 feet higher than that 50 feet. And parapet screen walls to screen rooftop equipment, that is one of those allowed items that can go 10 feet higher. However, in allowing something to go 10 feet higher, we do want to limit it. So the zoning ordinance does say 50% of the roof area can be covered with that 10-foot parapet. Also, the linear length, 50% of that can have that 10-foot height increase. So what the applicant found with the operation of their center using the air-cooled chillers, they need more of them on the roof. Potentially up to 90% of the roof, the area, and the linear length may need to have this equipment to make sure that it operates efficiently, stays far enough away from other coolers, gets high enough away from the generators. So they're requesting that those two limitations in a zoning ordinance be removed. But I should note that that is the limit of their request. There's no other change to development standards, setbacks, uses on a property. It really is just for this height increase. And this shows you ultimately, if this is approved, what it would look like. You basically would have this 10-foot extra screening of the chillers kind of running all along this entire length of the building. But in doing so, the applicant is proposing to make sure that that is architecturally enhanced with different materials and colors that match the building. And given that, even though there was a limited scope to this application, staff and applicant, we did follow all public notice procedures. To date, staff has not received any opposition to this request. So we do find it provides necessary screening. It'll help screen this equipment from neighboring properties and the public. And again, limited scope here. We're not changing anything else with this application. It still remains in conformance with the I-1 and all our industrial use standards. Staff is recommending approval. Planning and Zoning Commission heard this at their July 28th meeting. They're also recommending approval. With that, Mayor, council members, that concludes my presentation. Available for questions, the applicant is also here and available for any questions.
Would the applicant like to add anything at this time, or?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. For the record, my name's Andrew Yancey. I'm an attorney at Bergen-Freig, Smalley, and Overholz. They're at 4343 East Kemble Back Road in Phoenix. We represent Stream Data Center. They are a developer of data centers nationwide, and they own about 100 acres at the southwest corner of Lower Buckeye and Litchfield that they're looking to build out into a multi-building data center campus, representing an overall investment of about $1.5 billion. Now, as Steve mentioned, but it just really bears emphasizing, this is a very limited request. The property is Zoned I-1. We're not looking to change any I-1 uses. We're not looking to change any I-1 development standards. In fact, we actually have a site plan approved for the additional build-out under the I-1 uses and under the I-1 standards. What we're here for today is just this PD overlay request that is tailored to the rooftop screening standard. And just to be clear, we're actually asking you to let us do more screening, not less screening. And it, let me very quickly give you the reason why. Data centers create a lot of heat. There's a lot of electronic equipment there. Think about how hot your laptop may get. It's a whole lot of that altogether. So it requires very sophisticated cooling technology. There's really two kind of main methods to do it. One's a water evaporation system that's very water-heavy. We are not proposing that type of cooling equipment. We're proposing what's called a closed-loop air chiller system. That means there's a coolant that circulates back throughout because it's a closed loop and keeps going throughout. And the hot air from inside the building is taken out through the chillers and is exchanged with the air outside that's brought in through the coolant. So if you think about your basic principles of physics, heat rises. So having these chillers on the roof is very efficient for taking that hot air inside the building and pushing it out. It also lets it go to the prevailing winds. There's no, you know, walls there blocking it. It's not in between buildings or anything like that. It really helps with the dissipation of the heat. The other thing that we come across is the chillers do get hot. So you don't want them too close to each other because they can overheat each other. So we have a lot of room on top of the roof that is otherwise unused. So that's the reason for being able to put the chillers on the roof, being able to space them out, and really improve the efficiency of our operations. Because of the Article Three standard that Steve pointed out, we do have to screen that. Obviously, that makes sense. We want to screen rooftop mechanical equipment. But there is this limit to 50% of an elevation. And to have the most efficient operation possible, we really need the chillers to be spread out more than that. So what we're asking for is to expand that percentage of the roof where we can put the chillers and put the screening. We really do appreciate staff's work on this. Steve, as well as Karen Craver, who helped us out with this, have been great. I do have some slides. If you want me to bring them up, I'm happy to do so, or I can take any questions. Certainly appreciate your time and hope that you'll support this project.
Let's, let's see what we have from the rest of the council. Let's see if they have anything to add. Thank you. Let's see. With that, let's see, any, any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Please, City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2023-2219 by title only.
Adopt Resolution Number 2023-2219 declaring as public records those certain documents incorporated by reference in Ordinance 2023-1574 related to the rezoning case for Stream Data Centers.
Thank you. Would the council please enter a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2023-2219? I see a motion in a second. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Campbell's up.
I just have a quick question. Do you have other data centers that you do put the air chillers on the roof? And are they successful? Do they do what you want them to do in this desert heat?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell, thank you for the question. I know that Stream operates nationwide in a lot of different environments. They've, they've put their research into this. I can't speak personally to how they function other places, but they, they have put a lot in trying to figure this out, and they've done this in a lot of different places.
Well, the only business by there is Charles Roberts, which is an air conditioning company, and they, their yard has all of their things stored. So you're making your rooftop longer is not going to bother the neighborhood, so to speak. So I'm in favor of doing, of granting your request.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I don't see anything else. Let's go ahead and open the voting. Pass is six zero. Adopt Ordinance Number 2023-1574. Oh, that's you. I'm reading your piece. Go for it.
If you wanted to do it, you could.
No, that's okay. That's okay. It's all yours.
Adopt Ordinance Number 2023-1574, conditionally zoning approximately 104 acres of land located south of the southwest corner of Litchfield Road and Lower Buckeye Road from I-1 Light Industrial to I-1 Light Industrial with the planned area development pad overlay. Amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-aberrangement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for penalties, and directing the City Clerk to record a copy of this ordinance.
Thank you. City, City Council, please enter a motion in a second to approve Ordinance Number 2023-1574. See a motion in a second. Open up the request to speak. Don't see any more discussion. Let's go ahead and open up the vote. Pass is six zero. Thank you. Last public hearing item to consider is to annex Half Street of Citrus Road from Van Buren to Harrison. Let's open up the public hearing. Please introduce yourself for the public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christian Williams, Principal Planner here. I know this is the public hearing we've been waiting two and a half hours for, so I will make this as entertaining as possible.
All right, give it your best.
Public hearing to annex a piece of property into our corporate limits. So at the conclusion of this presentation, staff will be seeking your impact and also input and also the public comment regarding this application for annexation. Property for that consideration is located on Citrus Road, 3.26 acres. It is between Van Buren Street on the north, Harrison Street on the south, and it's the east half of Citrus Road. So on this slide here are council's annexation policies. They discuss the ability to serve the property, the long-term desirability of it, the likelihood that the property would develop in the county, and the general plan compatibility. Property, again, is that east half of Citrus Road. The underlying owners are Meritage Homes, as well as the City of Goodyear. And respectively, those two own the properties within that right-of-way area. The annexation is ultimately approved by yourselves and the underlying property owners. The owners would then seek to make improvements to Citrus Road on that east half to build that roadway at Goodyear City standards. And the general plan designates this area as neighborhood. The existing county zoning is R43, RU43, and also agriculture. So once it does come into the corporate limits, it would be Zone AU Agricultural Urban. When we talk about providing those basic services, those are here on the screen. And the property is really intended to become right-of-way for Citrus Road, Half Street improvements adjacent to Silva Farms at West Goodyear, as well as our fire station, 188. And with that overview, we are seeking your direction. And that direction would be hopefully initiating the annexation of the approximately 3.26 acres of property located along the east side of Citrus Road, Half Street between Van Buren on the north and Harrison Street on the south. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Would City Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2023-2321 by title only.
Adopt Resolution Number 2023-2321, authorizing execution of an annexation petition requesting annexation of city-owned property within Citrus Road alignment within city limits of the City of Goodyear and providing a of the City of Goodyear and providing effective date.
See, would the council please enter a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 2023-2321? See a motion in a second. Open for council discussion. Seeing none, let's open the voting. A vote may be held to call on executive session for the following reason: pursuant to ARS Number 38-431.03A34, discuss and consult with the city attorney for legal advice to consider its position and instruct its attorney regarding the city's position regarding contracts that are subject to negotiation related to the possible development agreement regarding King Ranch. We'd like a motion in a second to go into executive session. I see a motion in a second. Can I get a vote? Now we head on upstairs. Now we head on upstairs.